I'm going to call the public hearing to order for February 12th, 2025 at 6:00 PM. Roll call please.
Myers here.
Shawn.
Here.
Sherman is absent. Moritz is here. He's still at 6:00. Sheriff is here. Hickman is absent. Me is here.
Okay. At this point in time, since this is the first time this public body has met since the news a couple of days ago, I'd like to have a moment of silence for former Mayor Doug May his soul rest in peace. Okay. Introductions for this meeting. We have the Plating Committee Chair, Mr. Me is here. And we have consideration at this meeting. I'm going to let Mr. Me explain the four consideration items up, so I'm going to turn the floor over to you, Mr. Me.
So we have the proposed zoning reclassification of 316 and 320 Woodlawn Avenue. That's parcel number ID number 080065052000. From apartment residential to urban neighborhood R3 to allow for the potential expansion of the church property. Would you like to take them one at a time, or?
Just go through all four of them, or just list them all, and then I'm going to have Mike go over them.
Okay. We have the proposed establishment of BESIR codified ordinance BCO 1187.021 Ponds. Proposed establishment of codified ordinance BCO 1193.01 Regulation of Solar Panel Use in the City. And proposed amendment to the BESIRIS zoning code 1189.03 to clarify the general resurfacing requirements for off-street parking and loading areas.
Now at this point in time, I want to introduce Mike Keefe, who is the zoning administrator. And you can turn your microphone on over there and explain what all these changes are that the Plating Committee Chair just went over. Mr. Keefe.
Okay. The first item on the list for the zoning change for 316 through 320 Woodlawn Avenue is for a proposed building that they want to put on the adjoining property, adjoining a lot to the church existing. The property as it sits now is in the AR Apartment Residential Urban Neighborhood District, and it really restricts what they can do. They can't really have that type of building that they want to put in with how the zoning is set. So we're proposing to switch it to R3, to Urban Neighborhood Residential District that gives them leeway to build the building that they would like. This is also, the AR zoning district is under review to possibly be merged in with the R3 zoning district regulations as we are reviewing the ordinances in the ad hoc committee. Do you guys have any questions regarding this change?
I don't see any questions. Continue on to the second one then.
Number two, the ordinance for ponds. The verbiage for the pond ordinance is for any new ponds being built in town. It does not reflect any existing ponds that are in town. This is for anything new. So in the ordinance is included on what is required for pond design and what needs to be submitted as the intention for the construction, the overflow of the banks, the slope of the banks, any emergency overflows, and the flow of the water off the property either to a tile or to a natural waterway to the eventual rivers. Anything over 5,000 square feet of disturbed land is also required to have a stormwater management plan submitted to the engineer for review. And as of right now, no additional requirements are needed or review from Sol and Water as of today. Do you guys have any questions in regard to this?
I do have a question. These stipulations for the pond, this is for a new pond.
Yes. Anything that is existing is grandfathered in.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions or move on to the next one?
I do have one question on the pond.
Yes, question.
In number or letter J, why does it refer back to, you can request a variance from provisions of C? Why is that in J and not in C itself?
Give me a moment to reread this.
The top of page two, which is the additional part of J, says requesting a variance from the provisions of BCO 1187.021C.
Oh, the variance to not have contour data?
Yeah. When you put that in C, I mean, it seems odd that it's randomly in the middle of J.
No, it makes sense to have it in J. Because listing the variance at the bottom of the chance to have that removed, you want to have it listed in C that you can get a variance for it.
I guess I'm just baffled why it's in J when you still have a K and an L as well. Is my question confusing, or is it?
No, this makes sense on how it's done. Because J is all about the need for enclosure of a wall or fence and for the height. That shouldn't say a variance for the, it's required to have the contour data or a topo map for your, for the design submitted. I don't know why we're getting a, I'm not sure why there's a variance in here for the topo map.
That said, it should be struck.
That should be struck.
Okay.
Okay, so what sentences are we, are we striking out here again now? Excuse me.
At the end of J where it says you can ask for a variance on the contour.
Where it starts with a property owner. Okay, you want to strike that out?
Yeah.
Mr. Keefe, was McKeever and Associates Engineering involved in any of this legislation, coming up with any of this?
Yes.
How extensively were they, what all did they contribute to?
Dylan Wyatt and I had a meeting over this, and that's how we came with this. We also referenced the ODNR Pond Design Manual. And also referenced other pond ordinances in other cities. And also looked at the stormwater management requirements for changes, or stormwater management requirements for any, any site where there's more than 5,000 square foot of disturbed ground. There will be a fee for review of a plan for a pond by Mr. Wyatt. Because part of the plan will also, well, most of the plans submitted for a pond will have included everything what's required for a stormwater permit.
Okay, so the, if we were to strike this out, we actually have to, it's the committee that has to request to strike it out. This public hearing can't request to strike that out. Just noted for the record.
So I guess go back to the committee?
Yeah, they would. We're just a hearing.
Striking that section C?
This is just a hearing. We can't request any changes. The hearing is for the purpose of the.
Okay, so that's the only change that we have, that I see.
Okay. Is there any other questions on number two, or are we going to move on to number three?
And there's no reason for them this to go back to the planning commission? Okay. Gotcha.
Not unless there's a big change, right?
Pardon?
Unless there's a big change, then we take it back.
Okay, fine. Just wanted to double check. Thank you.
Any other question on number two? Or we're going to move on to number three? Okay, saying none, moving on to number three, Mr. Keefe?
Yes, the proposed establishment of codified ordinance for solar panel use. Solar panels for use and installation in the city. Everything that we have in this ordinance pertains to residential panels, either roof mounted or ground-based. It sets what is required, and also final inspection will be by the fire department so that they are up to the requirement of putting in a, a walkway that's required in between the panels for the roof, for roof access. And also there is a requirement for setback from the edge of the roof line and up to the peak. That's all in the state requirements for solar panel construction.
The fire chief has been through this at all?
Yes, and this has been reviewed by the fire chief.
This wasn't citizen initiated, right? This was you proactively?
Yes.
Okay. So there's probably nobody here to speak on this one, I'm assuming?
And currently, and currently we have 16 approved roof-mounted solar permits right now in town, and I have three others on my desk waiting for fee payments for permits. And as of today, in the last three weeks, I've had inquiries on five different properties for the possibility of solar farms, if we have anything on the books ordinance-wise, if we allow it in town.
When did you start tracking the panels?
It's part of my building permit.
But when did you start? You started tracking them once you took the job, or?
Yeah.
So there could be some grandfathered ones still out there.
I looked when I started this, I have not seen any.
Is Ron Boers on there? Because he's got some.
Yes.
Oh, he is on there.
October 21st. MH3 solar.
So during our conversations with Mike, then I thought we needed to get this going because there's so many solar panels going up now, so.
There's also an issue, from what I've been seeing, there's been issues with, I know we don't enforce residential building construction, but there has been issues with electrical panels not being hooked up right. I haven't heard anything here in town, but I've heard issues with almost all these solar companies of not hooking up properly. So I don't know if there's a way that we can.
Is the BESIRIS City Schools on that list?
It won't be because that's all, that's considered commercial.
So this is only pertaining to residential stuff?
Yes.
Is it noted in here that it's residential only?
This is all residential.
But I mean, does it say residential? Because unless it says residential, it's probably going to encroach on the commercial side.
It was meant to be residential. It's been changed so many times, I'm not sure.
No, it does not say anything about residential.
So I'm wondering if that might have to be added once it goes back to committee? Because also if this is intended to affect commercial solar farms.
We'd have to have a separate ordinance because they have totally different requirements.
But does this, does this, in your eyes, affect a non-residential solar development on ground-mounted systems?
Would that be a moot point if the committee changes and add the word residential, though?
That would be under Section D, but this, this pertains to.
Residential ground-mounted system.
Rear yard.
So, so if you have, like you stated, you have five inquiries from solar developers for commercial systems, then this, this has nothing to do with that?
Right. We'd have to have a separate section developed.
Any other questions on number three?
So if the city introduced solar to some part of the plant, they, this wouldn't affect?
Well, the city's exempt from its own zoning.
Right.
I didn't know if that was what you were thinking about, or?
No, I'm, I'm thinking if a solar company comes in and says, hey, we want to build a solar farm on some parcel that's not owned by the city and it's commercial, is this got anything to do with that? And apparently what I'm finding out is it does not.
So if we had a parcel of land that was what they called a pond or something, a retention pond that they wanted to put solar panels in, and they wanted to purchase that, you are saying this might affect that if they wanted to purchase land?
You're going to put solar panels inside a retention pond?
Well, see what I'm saying, a gray area, something that can't be used for commercial use.
I think if, when this goes back to committee, if we change it to add residential, that takes care of all that. It creates though, as Mike was saying, we have the need that we need to refer and start addressing this on the commercial side of things as well.
Okay. So we need to change that to residential then? Or add residential?
What had to be recorded then?
Any other questions on number three? Going to move on to number four, Mr. Keefe?
Yes, number four pertains to paving requirements for off-street parking and loading areas. As of right now, the only requirement for parking areas are in the downtown business district to be paved. We're looking to expand that requirement. So it would be all commercial and industrial areas.
So you want?
Is there still going to be the?
The dustless ones don't?
Nah, the, the BZA can give an exemption or a, what's that called? Conditional use.
Conditional use.
So outside of the downtown, will commercial still be able to apply for the conditional use to possibly not have the blacktop or concrete?
I do believe it's already in that commercial is supposed to have a paved parking.
Okay, so this, this came up when, and I'm just going to use the property for example, Baker's Pizza there, they had for a while the, the stone, the stone, and then, you know, where the old diner was at that they tore down. And then somebody said, well, I don't like that there's no blacktop there. Let's just make all commercial have to be blacktop or concrete 100% of the time, no way around it. And then, and this might have been before you came on board with the city. I, I brung up the scenario. I said, well, come on now. I'm like, you can't say all parts of the city because like out there around, I'm just going to use the storage complex that just is going in across from the Chevy dealer, the old Carter lumber. I said, you, you wouldn't want to have it to where they're forced to put blacktop in, so why don't you make it to where a, outside of the downtown district, it's conditional use where the BZA could grant the waiver?
You're comparing two different business types to be the same for parking requirements. Baker's is in the downtown business district. Carter lumber is on the general business that is bordered by outside corporation limit property, township property.
No, no, Carter lumber's in city limits.
I know that, but they're surrounded by township property. You can't compare those two properties that they should fall within the same.
You're saying that this here is going to make it to where every commercial property has to have concrete or blacktop?
In the downtown business and general business district in downtown area, that's the area we're talking about. We're not forcing like Eagle Crusher to pave their lot.
Where does this say that this only applies to the downtown business district?
Right here it says off-street parking in downtown business district. This is for only downtown business district. So really the only other.
So this, this whole thing has only got to do with the downtown business, it has nothing to do with any other district?
It should have been general business as well.
Thought we added that. All off-street parking loading areas, not the loading zones except for parking areas served to single-family residential uses shall comply with the surfaces requirements found herein unless the variance is granted by the Board of Zoning.
Because this would be changing if we expand the downtown business district from spring to walnut. That would include the additional businesses that would be, would be required. One of them would be the tap house, even though they were told they had to be paved, they're only paved with stone. So that's a whole different issue that I'm not talking about here.
As long as there's still a BZA path to grant a conditional exemption, like I understand.
I don't think a BZA variance, I don't think you can get a conditional use for a parking paving requirement because that affects your storm runoff for your property, the water calculation for the storm sewer, if I do, if I'm correct.
The stone's going to make it less runoff than the blacktop because the stone will soak it up to some extent. So when this was first brought up before, we had originally said that downtown business district, there was no conditional use for anything but the blacktop or the concrete. And then every other commercial district, it was supposed to be a requirement that could be waived by conditional use BZA approval. For, and I, and I had brung the whole thing up with storage complexes because storage complexes, which generally do go not in the downtown, they're going to be more towards the outskirts, you're not going to practically pave those. You're going to probably have stone.
Okay. So Baker's is paved. Where are you trying to go with this, Kurt?
I'm just making sure you still have a conditional use.
Well, you, you can't get a conditional use for paving.
I was going to say, are we talking about variance or conditional use? Because variance and then conditional use are two different things, right?
Yeah.
And the, the ordinance for finding for a variance is very specific and damn near impossible. Right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You can't get a variance for parking condition.
I mean, first of, first and foremost, you have to, the board would have to find that the land, that the lot in question was too shallow, too narrow, too steep, or something that would make it.
Yeah, well, there's four requirements, and those four requirements are, if you look at other cities, ours is way more strict, way more, it's almost impossible to meet them four requirements.
So, going back to one. It says all commercial and industrial areas shall have an area that is typically designed for parking purposes of any kind to be surfaced by either concrete or asphalt. So that would cover your GI and your LIC. That's number one.
Yeah, I, I see it. And I'm, my question is, is can the BZA grant as it sees fit an exemption to that and allow the stone?
BZA has no authority over that. That'd be the city engineer.
So then look at number two, if you would, please.
I just want to make this clear. This was for the parking paving, this is going on before I even got here.
Okay.
So a better person for this, I mean, yeah, this should be in all the commercial properties in the downtown area, more than just the downtown business district. I mean, we can enforce it for downtown business district, but it also should be for the downtown area, what general businesses are in the downtown area, this parking requirement for
Okay, my question though is number two talks about unless a variance is granted by the Board of Zoning Appeals. I'm questioning, based on what you're saying, is that even proper?
I don't even think the BZA can grant that.
Okay.
This is, I'll have to go back to committee on this. And check to see if, I don't even think we can even grant that.
You don't think the BZA can grant that?
I don't think it has the authority for it.
How does the law director, what do you think legally?
My next question. Well, it's something I can look into. I'm inclined to agree with Mike, but it's something I can look into.
I think there's a clause somewhere though in the BCO that all decisions by the zoning administrator are able to be appealed to the BZA.
That is correct. That is correct.
And then the B- And then the BZA still is subject to those other four requirements that he mentioned, the, is it this, is it that, is it too close, is it, you know, and they can only grant a variance if all of them other conditions are met, which was like, near impossible to me. But I'll just give an example, where I'm going with this thing. I was, I was contacted by a realtor that has a parcel listed out there on Stutsor Road, kind of like across from the sheriff's office. You know, it's kind of like a field, and they said they had it, they had the property, they had a buyer that was gonna buy it and have like a trucking company where they were parking their tractor trailers out there. And they said they come up here to the zoning office and found out that they had to blacktop the whole thing, and, or concreted. And they said at that point, the buyer just said, I'm not, I am not concreting or blacktopping.
Hold on, that's an R1 area.
Yeah.
That was an R1. That's, you can't even put a business in there.
No, no, no. Right off Stutsor, next to the counseling, is general business. The front six, 10 acres is general business.
That's the sec, that's before the counseling or after?
West side of the counseling is general business. It's like 12 acres of it, uh, split up in three parcels.
So as this ordinance stands right here in front of us, do you believe that if this is passed, that somebody could buy that lot and put stone in for the parking?
Without seeing the plan, I can't, I can't say that. Because you have the requirements for the aprons, that, that's set, that has to be concrete aprons for city ordinance for driveway.
Well, yeah, but beyond the aprons, and once you get into the lot itself, can the whole lot?
It depends on what the use is. If it's gonna be general business trucking, that's, that's not me to see, to say, that's gonna be, I'd have to talk to Dylan on that one. I've had five different people come to me about this property. I don't remember talking to some, I heard somebody talk about a shop for something, but not for a trucking company. I've heard a paintball company, a dog park, a mini farm, and I'm not sure what the other one was. But I did make mention that if you disturb more than 5,000 square feet, you have to do a stormwater permit, and also the requirement that if it's a, if it's a business, you're gonna, you're probably gonna have to pave the parking lot. So.
My big thing, I see what you're trying to do here, but this ain't the right time for us to be chasing freaking business away from town.
Oh, exactly. This, we need to make, you know, we, there's situations, not all commercial properties have to be blacktop or concreted. I mean, you're, you're going to have applications where stone makes perfect sense for some of these commercial properties, and it has to be a path, even if that path involves coming to the BZA and seeking a variance, is that? I mean, there has to be a path here. Otherwise, you're gonna, these businesses that want to come in, and, and nobody can afford, you, you can't afford concrete or blacktop when you're first starting out in most cases. You might have to put the stone in first, and then later on.
How about require concrete aprons and the rest is stone?
Well, I think the concrete aprons is, is a requirement that's not, you can't get around it.
Right.
Can I request that we move on to see if there's proponent, noponent to these, and then we can decide what to do with this last one, since it seems to be a little problematic?
Okay, we're gonna move on past number four. Next thing on here, I'm just gonna say that the notice for this public hearing was published in a telegraph form on December 26, 2024, and January 2, 2025. Inside the packet is the actual notice that was in the telegraph form, so this legal notice has taken place. Today, anyone interested in expressing their opinions about the proposed changes may do so by approaching the podium. Each person is asked to state their name, address, and whether they are a proponent or opponent of the proposed application. Five minutes will be allotted for each guest. Everyone is asked to keep in mind that the public hearing is being held on to share information. No decision will be made at this time, and all information presented will be considered by the plating committee and slash or appropriate committees at a later date. Plating committee, do you have additional comments? No additional comments from the plating committee. So now we're gonna allow the public to come up to the podium and speak, and tell us if you are in favor or against any of the proposed changes.
If I may, typically, we go in order, one at a time, just going down the line.
Oh, okay. Uh, well, which one are you talking about?
The ponds, and basically just the language. I want to know from the attorney, if somebody reads that language 10 years from now, and they interpret that, that I'm not grandfathered, because I see no place in that language that says somebody is grandfathered.
Well, first of all, can you state your name and address?
Jerry Agee, 1530 Woodlawn Avenue.
Okay, thank you.
So that's covered by the Constitution, in the effect that it would run afoul of the Fifth Amendment, it would become a taking that even though yours isn't grandfathered explicitly, it's grandfathered legally, because the government would in effect be taking your land without giving you fair compensation for it.
That's all I wanted to know, about the legal part. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Do you need to know if he's opposed or against?
Yeah.
Would you consider yourself a proponent or an opponent?
Opponent.
Opponent, okay. Um, anybody else?
Gary Diver, 1928, Mary Grove, Stars, Ohio. I'm in agreement with what's proposed. I don't have any thoughts about it all. Okay. So what you want to know?
Are you wanting to construct a pond?
I'm thinking about it.
Okay.
Depends on, depends on money.
So we'll mark you down as propos, you are in favor of the?
Right.
Okay.
Right. If things would work out right, I'm very much interested, but it depends on another month or so. Okay?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kurt, if I may ask, Mr. Agee, I just wanted to make sure, because I had to stop and think, okay, what is a proponent and what is an opponent? That you stated that you are an opponent, which means you are not.
Against.
You are, yeah, you are against this part. Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
The government's got it.
So are you?
Gotcha.
It was in too many things.
Are you against it because you already have a pond, and you think there are gonna be problems down the road?
I'm against it, because I don't think we need to keep making more and more laws that'll go against the, the people, property owners.
Okay.
There could be, there could be an issue here, there, somewhere.
Yeah. This whole thing was started so we could allow ponds within the city limits.
Well, I've had this for quite some time. I just want to make sure there's no problems. And fewer laws are better, in my opinion.
Yeah. Problem was, it was gonna allow Mr. Diver to build a pond, because he's right inside the city limits, he's on the edge of town, but we had to have this for him to build a pond.
Yeah. And why would you have to have that for him to build a pond?
Because he's within the city limits.
So am I.
Yeah, but after your pond came in, it was made so that you couldn't make them anymore.
I was unaware that they had passed another law.
It was a state thing.
After I built that.
Yeah.
What year was your pond built?
It's 46 years.
I was gonna say.
I don't, I, I think all this zoning came into play in the 2000 era, so you were before the zoning.
Yeah.
I evidently missed it. I, oops. Well, it's kind of unusual, because I, I kind of keep up on the news.
Now, we were up here once before about the pond, years ago.
Was that with the fences around them?
Yes.
That was the pools and stuff, the fence requirement?
Yes.
Yeah, that's when we were up here again, because, you know, we've had the pond. Most people don't even know it's there. It is. Well, that's not fair.
It was also my understanding, back when they had the problem with the pools years ago, that the city didn't have the authority to pass laws on ponds. It was a state issue. That was my understanding then, when we questioned it.
In regards to fencing around them, or just in, in having them in general?
Having anything to do with ponds, period. It was a state, it was in the state's jurisdiction.
Never even thought of that.
And now EPA has stepped in over water, and those laws are really something. They control even a puddle of rainwater. But that is getting ready to change.
Trump's taking care of it.
Trump will provide.
I say let the man build a pond. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Um, do any other guests want to come up and state anything? I do not see anybody else coming up to the podium, so I would like to have one motion to collectively refer all four of these issues back to the plating committee for further study.
So moved.
Mr. Meade made a motion, Ms. Sherrick seconded to refer those all back to the plating committee. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Now we need a motion to excuse, we have council members that are absent. Do we want to do it as one, or individually?
Individually, please.
Okay, need a motion to excuse Mr. Hickman?
Salute.
No second to that.
Uh, Mr. Myers made the motion, Ms. Sherrick seconded to excuse Mr. Hickman. Um, roll call vote.
Myers?
Yes.
Shireman? Yes. Shireman's absent. Myers?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Hickman is absent. Me?
Yes.
Mr. Hickman is excused, and then a need, if anybody wants to entertain a motion to excuse Councilwoman Shireman. I hear no motion, so Ms. Shireman is unexcused. The motion adjourned a meeting?
Salute.
Uh, Mr. Myers made the motion to adjourn, Ms. Sherrick seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. We are adjourned at 6:43 PM.